This meeting of the City of Socorro City Council is set to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats and everyone please silence all electronic equipment. No disruptive behavior or outburst will be tolerated and violators are subject to ejection and possible prosecution.
La junta del Consilio de la Ciudad de Socorro esta por empezar. Caballeros, favor de quitarse las cachuchas/ sombreros y todos favor de poner en silencio todo equipo electrónico. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial o revoltoso, a quien nos siga esta regla se le sacará y puede ser infraccionado.
It is 6:00 PM, this meeting is called to order. Item number two, pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of quorum.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Navarres.
Here.
Alejandro Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Ivy Avalos.
Here.
Rudy Cruz.
Present.
And Ivan Colombia Loos.
Yes.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number four, public comment.
Mayor, we have several speakers for a public comment. Our first speaker is Ellen Pfeiffer. Ms. Pfeiffer, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Rancho Miraval Estates. I've lived there for about thirty years and I'd like to speak on the item number twelve, the plat that's pending approval. They're talking about four, two hundred and some homes being here, but that doesn't count the plat that's been finished before, which is going to make it about five hundred homes that they're going to have accessing through our neighborhood. We have a very quiet and peaceful neighborhood, it's very nice ambiance, and that much more traffic through the neighborhood is going to disrupt that peace and quiet. I walk my dog down the street facing traffic and even though we have a twenty-five speed limit, the residents currently don't always honor that, and I have to look back to see who's coming fast because they drive down the middle of the road. It's a safety issue. More traffic, more speeders, and we have kids that ride their bikes and things on the road and it's, that much more traffic is going to be horrendous safety, safety issue. The people in that proposed development don't pay taxes to Socorro, we do. So, I asking you to consider not allowing them to come through Los Tres Caballos Road. The wear and tear on the road is going to be incredible. Who's going to repair the roads? They don't, it's, it's not something that gets done quickly enough as it is in Socorro. We have, you know, limited resources. Who's going to do the repairs? How soon are they going to be taken? Safety issue again, and I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to speak and remind you, who do you represent? Your Socorro citizens or the developers? Thank you.
Thank you. Damian Pilatski. So you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Damian Pilatski. I am a resident of Rancho Miraval Estates for the last twenty-five years. I'm a graduate of the United States Military Academy and was served as an engineer in the US Army. And under that capacity, I had to oversee the reconstruction of roads, bridges, airfields, and helipads in throughout Central and South America. Was not an inexpensive operation, but I'm able to spot poor design which requires restructuring, redesign, rebuilding. And the Buena Vista, item number twelve, your Buena Vista, our Vista, item number twelve, that development is going to cost somebody money the way it is currently laid out. I'm also, and you may recognize me as a co-host of TuneIn for Help, so you know I'm an expert problem solver. And we can see the problems that are being proposed under that particular development. And there's two particular issues that you need to be carefully considering. Finally, I am a coordinator of career programs for this Lettuce School District and in that capacity I design programs of study and coordinate the resources necessary so that students can graduate prepared to enter careers in engineering and emergency services, those things that are at an issue in item number twelve. The applicant for number twelve has two particular issues that you should consider. One is adding additional access. In their first phase, they were in compliance in having two points of access. So they remain in compliant with those. They don't need an additional point of access. So anything that they're adding, you want to be very careful because you don't need my credentials to foresee that what they're doing is trying to push the burden of the cost of development onto some other jurisdiction. Maybe you, maybe the city of, or the county of El Paso, maybe somebody else. But they're trying to shift the burden, the financial burden away from themselves by having an access through an already existing road that you're, maybe you will have to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Raquel Gomez. Ms. Gomez, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Raquel Gomez. I'm a twenty-nine-year resident of Rancho Miraval Estates. I too am here to speak to you. I hear, I'm also here to speak to you regarding item twelve, the opening of the Tres Caballos Street to accommodate the new Vista Bonita development. On a recent planning and zoning meeting dated March, I'm sorry, May sixteenth, the developer was here, I believe a gentleman by the name of, give me one second. Robert Romero spoke on behalf. He indicated, and I quote, "When we submitted the plot to open up Tres Caballos, we did not include Tres Caballos." That is a direct quote. Second quote from Mr. Romero, who again represents Trey Associates. The developer is willing to not include it. Third quote from the same gentleman, "We have no issue with removing Tres Caballos." Fourth quote from the same gentleman, again representing the planning firm, "We are not pushing back." Okay? However, Mr. Romero made another comment stating that it was requested by staff that we include the connection. The residents are requesting further information and clarification as to who exactly is staff that is requesting that Tres Caballos be open to give access to this new community. We feel there are some questions that are unanswered. Fast forward three weeks to this next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of June sixth, we now have a new representative for Trey Associates, Ms. Linda Troncoso, who now changed their story and said that in all cases, they were now requesting access to Tres Caballos, that it be opened. Mr. David Estrada, who is also, he's on the Commission for Planning and Zoning, he is also a resident of Rancho Miraval Estate. He questioned her over and over and over for several minutes, probably more than thirty minutes, as to why, why a change when just three weeks prior, they didn't need Tres Caballos. Okay? She indicated that it was due to recommendations from ESD, Emergency Services Department. I'm not an engineer, but I do know that that seems like something that would be looked at prior. So we are requesting answers to our questions. If not, we would like this to be postponed. Thank you.
Richard Rep. You have three minutes, sir.
As far as opening up the, our road to, through traffic from adjoining subdivisions, I think the increase in traffic would be hazardous for pedestrians, joggers, especially in the evening with poor lighting and a winding road. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jesús Morales. Mr. Morales, you have three minutes.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jesús Morales, I live in Rancho, five thirty-nine Rancho Viejo, and I lived there for fifteen years. As you may have already noticed, most of the residents in, in our community are residents that have lived there for an average of over twenty years. We have a couple of new people that moved in, but I'm sure that they are planning to stay in there because of the type of community that we have. We are a strong community, a community that I would imagine you, as the city council, would like to continue to conserve for Socorro. Some of the issues that were brought up was that developer needed access and that the municipality of Socorro would not be able to deny access. The thing is that the access is already there for the community. One access is through North Loop and the other access is through Alameda. They already have two, two ways of access. The other issue that they're saying is that they need the access for emergency services. Emergency services, as far as Socorro is concerned, the Socorro Volunteer Fire Department does not respond to that area. The border of their district or of responsibility ends at Rancho Viejo. That area belongs to Clint. The Police Department does not respond to that area. The Police Department for Socorro is responsible for Socorro only. So I think that argument is not valid because that was the only thing that the developer was offering as a benefit to us. But emergency services from Clint or anybody, anywhere else do not respond to our area. It's only Socorro and the Socorro PD and the Socorro Volunteer Department that respond to our area. I would like you to consider that and thank you very much for the time that you gave. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy McDaniel. Ms. McDaniel, you have three minutes.
Kathy McDaniel, I have lived on Rancho Viejo for over thirty years. During this time, we have always felt safe in our neighborhood. We aren't afraid to walk on the street or to go out and check the horses after dark. With the changes you are considering, this may not be a safe neighborhood anymore. More traffic will make walking unsafe and I am concerned for the safety of my home and my horses. I am also concerned what this unregulated subdivision will do to our property value. The kinds of homes in Vista Bonita are varied. While there are many nice homes of various sizes, there are many trailers and what appears to be substandard dwellings. I urge you to deny full opening of Tres Caballos in Rancho Viejo for the safety and quiet of a neighborhood that cares about its residents. As for access of emergency vehicles, please consider a security gate that police, fire, and emergency vehicles can open and would keep Rancho Miraval safe, quiet neighborhood that I have known for thirty years. Thank you. Thank you.
Tony Valdez. Mr. Valdez, you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. My name is Tony Valdez. I'm talking about the article or section twelve, and I'm also a resident of Rancho Miraval Estates and I am a very proud owner of one of the residence there, property. I've been there over twenty years and I love where I live. I love the place that my children grew up in and I enjoy my community. As you, as you can see, we're all very tight, tight-knit community. All of us have the same vision in mind as far as safety for ourselves, our families, our property, and this pretty much kind of puts a kink in that. This new construction of additional residences, approximately two hundred and some, somewhat residents, it's going to be kind of dangerous for our community because of the traffic, because of the infrastructure, because we don't have an infrastructure already set up in place. The roadways, the, the width of the roadway will not be able to handle that type of traffic. Now, added to that, the safety aspect of it, I've noticed that there's been a lot more accidents. Just in fact, today, there was an accident in that exit area where Rancho Viejo enters North Loop. There was a bad accident there that I, that I noticed. And I've also noticed many other accidents there. I also question the fact that what one of your constituents brought up was the first initial meeting where the developer was willing to forego that access to Tres Caballos. And I'm also wondering why that changed from the first one to the, to the next meeting that, that took place. It was understood that they didn't even want it on the plans and all of a sudden, now they want it on the plans to, to develop that area. So that puts in question, who's, who's driving this particular plan to change everything now? So I hope that you guys understand that we as constituents rely on your, on your experience and I hope that you make the right decision because this particular community does not exist in El Paso. Yeah, they're similar to, maybe there might be similar communities out there, but this is our community and we are very proud of where we live and what we can do there. Horses, we can walk our dogs out there, we can do a lot of things that in other communities you might not be able to. So you, you have the opportunity. Another constituent brought up the fact that-
Mr. Valdez, your time is up.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it. Please take that into consideration.
Thank you. Ofelia Carrete. Ms. Carrete, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. There's so many of us and you're probably going to get tired of listening to all of us, but I hope you keep your ears and your mind open. I know that the city grows and with the growing, there's going to be more traffic. But all of us are asking you to please, as members of this community, take our safety into consideration. We don't have sidewalks, we don't have lighting. We walk on the street when we walk our area. We want to be able to walk around our neighborhood. The kids during the summer, they're outside with the bikes. We see a car, we need to move to the side where there's dirt. Now, there's not even enough space on the street if a car is parked on the dirt for both cars on each direction to pass. One of them has to stop, allow the other car to pass, and then the other car can move on. That can give you an idea how narrow our street is. There's not supposed to be any trailers going back and forth on the street. They are doing it. There's big trucks. When that happens, it's the same thing. One car has to stop to allow the other one to come in. We, on North Loop, it's a passing lane, okay? They, there's a construction that is almost done on North Loop. They built a little piece that the cars can go in through that area to turn to Rancho Viejo. There's a big hole, they never finished it. And the more traffic that goes through it, the hole is getting bigger with its damaging our cars. We cannot stay on North Loop to turn to Rancho Viejo because since it's a passing lane and there is so much traffic. A lot of cars don't stop, they want to pass the other ones. We had a lot of missed accidents head-on and as you heard, we had one today and we had other ones. Please, please, as members of this community and you represent us, don't take our safety away. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. Hector Quiñones. Mr. Quiñones, you have three minutes.
Yes. My name is Hector Quiñones and I've lived in that residence for over thirty years also. And I'm here to support our community, our neighbors, and request that you reconsider the opening of Tres Caballos for all the reasons that they have provided, okay? And I'm here just to support and to voice my opinion on it and I'm against the opening of Tres Caballos. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Garcia.
My name is Denise Garcia. I live on three six seven Rancho Viejo. I just want to voice my strong opposition to the proposal of the connecting Tres Caballos Street and Rancho Viejo Street in order to access North Loop. The controversial plan has sparked a heated debate within our community and I firmly believe that such a connection would be detrimental to the well-being and character of our neighborhood. First and foremost, we must consider the impact on our local residents. Tres Caballos Street and Rancho Viejo Street are both well-established residential areas characterized by peaceful surrounding and strong sense of community, as you can see. The proposed connection would introduce a significant increase in traffic flow disrupting the tranquility that we have cherished for so long, resulting noise pollution, congestion, and safety hazards would greatly diminish the quality, quality of life and pose a risk to the well-being of our family and children. Furthermore, allowing the developer access to these streets would bring about a numerous detrimental consequences and connecting these streets would also compromise the safety and integrity of our neighborhood. As it stands, Tres Caballos Street and Rancho Viejo Street are residential roads designed to accommodate the needs of the local residents. By connecting them, we would be, we would open the floodgates to a surge of traffic seeking to access North Loop. The increased volume of vehicles, many of which would be speeding or using our streets as shortcuts, would impose a serious risk for our pedestrians, cyclists, and overall safety of our community. Let's not forget the reason why the developer's request was rejected, rejected in 2019. The concerns raised then, such as inadequate infrastructure to support additional traffic and the strain on local residents and the potential degradation of the neighborhood's character, remain valid today. We cannot ignore the wisdom of the past decision which was made to safeguard the interests and well-being of the community. As custodians of the city, it is our duty to protect the rights and welfare of our residents. By denying the developer's requests, we will send a strong message that voices of peoples matters and we prioritize the quality of life over short-term gains. And then, in conclusion, the proposal to connecting Tres Caballos Street and Rancho Viejo Street in order to access North Loop is a misguided decision that would have far-reaching negative consequences for our community. We must prioritize the well-being and safety, the quality of life to our residents over short-term convenience. Let us work together to find alternative solutions and address the traffic concerns without compromising the essence of our neighborhood. Our community deserves better and we must stand united to protect what makes our neighborhood special. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesús Cabrera. Mr. Cabrera, you have three minutes.
My name is Jesús Cabrera and I live in Tres Caballos Street and my property is over four acres, almost five acres. And since 2019, the developer agreed not to access to Tres Caballos. Besides, he's supposed to do even a rock wall, six feet wa, uh, wall, a rock wall between the two subdivisions, which nothing been talking about it. Now, I got a special need here and the tranquility of that, of that area, it helps a lot. Now, the street is not enough wide, it's only twenty-seven feet wide, Tres Caballos Street. The other one, probably thirty feet, something like that. The roads, about twenty-eight years ago, when they put the water and the sewer lines and everything, they damaged, they put a small irrigation lines to my property. To let you know right now, Tres Caballos has a easement for irrigation both sides. My lines runs under that street. Up to the point that they damaged my lines, it's supposed to be six inches wide, now it's only four, they dent, they destroyed. Up to the point that I had to pay a eight thousand dollar gate so I have my own irrigation gate. Now, all these streets, they're already old, they need to refurnish, all of them. Who's going to pay that? The developer? I don't think so. My point is, that street is going to be a bridge for San Luis Sanrio and for Clint and anybody wants to make a shortcut besides that, not two hundred and fifty houses, two hundred and fifty houses, they're already there. So even a two, a two-car per house is a thousand. Now, what's going to happen when the, when the railroad stops and stays up to two hours, they want to try to cross through Rancho Viejo and Tres Caballos? It's going to be a nightmare, it's going to be a boulevard, it's not going to be a street. And that's, you know, I invite you to go and see the area that we have. Everybody's telling us, you know, you're living like a nice area, you know, it's, I wish, you know, that that area can be closed completely. But now with this street, there's going to be a lot of accidents. Today, I had to take my son to therapy, now I had to leave thirty, forty-five minutes and then I got an, it's an accident right in North Loop and Rancho Viejo. It's just the beginning. So I really appreciate if you reconsider to make another study in those streets before you make a decision.
Mr. Cabrera, your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Norma Estrada. Ms. Estrada, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Norma Estrada and I too am a resident of Rancho Miraval. I'd like to ask your permission to play a couple of video clips.
Would anybody?
They're-
How long are they?
They're like thirty seconds, forty seconds each, there's just two, and it's just to emphasize the, a couple of the points that our residents have already made. It's a couple of clips from previous zoning point.
Motion to allow two videos. Second.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro García?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz? And Ivan Colomía Lobos?
Unfortunately, I'm a resident of Rancho Miraval, and I must abstain.
Go ahead, Ms. Estrada.
Can you please go to slide dated May 16? I'll give you a second to, to read that. And then, can you please go to the next slide and play the video?
That when we submitted the plat, we had not included Tres Caballos because we are aware of the history and we were aware of the residents' concerns. The developer is willing to, to not include it. I'd like to propose that if it could be added as a condition, we as the designers, as the representative of the developer, and the developer have no issue with removing Tres Caballos. If the plat is approved with that condition, we can move forward that way. We're, we're more than happy to do it. We are not pushing back at all. I just want the residents to know that on behalf of the developer. I, I would just want, obviously, staff to, to agree because it was requested by staff that, that we, we include that connection. So, if we're all in agreement, I...
To June 6th, please?
That when we...
Okay, can you play the next video, please?
And with the developer, and having heard those comments, we decided that it's important for the community to have the second connection.
Can you share some of those comments with us?
ESD said that they were concerned, although it met code, they were concerned with the fact that your street, that long cul-de-sac, was a single point of access because Tres Caballos didn't connect to anything. And so, they believed that all additional connections are always important, and they were very much in support of having that roadway connect. And I know not, not everybody's a fan of them, but they felt like the more connections, the better because it provides them more opportunities to respond.
And so, although it meets code, Rancho Miraval meets code with one access point, ESD is saying we recommend that second access point.
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay. But you, as the applicant, you still have the option of installing the gate if you, if you choose to.
We are asking to access the full right-of-way as it exists today.
But as the applicant, you, you have that option to install the gate as, as it was said last meeting by, by, by you guys. You were all in favor, you know? But now, having talked to ESD, although it's not, although it's in code, we understand that part. But do you still have that option? You still have that option to, to, to install the gate if you, if you choose to do so?
Sir, our request today is to instruct, to fully connect to that right-of-way.
Okay. So, so, so by not answering, we're led to believe that you still have that, that option, right? I mean, it's a, we're, we're just trying to understand. I mean, because, because it's a, it's a, it's a yes or no question. And, and I'm thinking, well, why, why not? Why not? If, what changed? If last week, you were on board, now this week, ESD is recommending...
Yes, sir. We support ESD's recommendation. As the applicant, we support ESD's recommendation, and so, we choose not to request to put a gate there. We choose to fully connect to the, request to fully connect to the right-of-way.
So, then, it's just the same question that everybody else is asking themselves, why the change? We wanna know why they were in support of not opening Tres Caballos with full access. And, and the following week, they changed their mind completely. I mean, what's the interest in the staff of having that access open? And just like everybody else said, please keep in mind that it's our, it's our, our community, and it's safe. We live in peace. We just wanna keep it that way for everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, and we have reached the allotted thirty minutes for public comment.
How many more speakers do we have left? Six. Six speakers? Will anyone entertain the motion to allow these speakers, or, what is it? Like eighteen minutes?
Motion to approve six more speakers? Eighteen minutes? Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro García?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz? And Ivan Colomía Lobos?
I will abstain. Thank you.
David Estrada?
Hello. My name is David Estrada. I'm a member of the, the zoning board, so I truly appreciate y'all's position. So, thank you very much for your time. The last two meetings, as you saw in the video, June 6th to, to last Tuesday's meeting, night and day. I wanna establish what, I wanna state what was established during the, the, those zoning board meetings. We asked staff, and they could not give us not one benefit for the city of Socorro, for the, for the residents of Rancho Miraval. Not one benefit for allowing access. We asked the developer, same thing. It was established that the developer has a choice whether or not they wanna request access or not. It was also established that the developer can install, can install a gate if they choose to do so. Also, the ESD, it's only a recommendation. It's not a requirement from, from the ESD. And so, the developer can choose on whether or not they can, they can request that gate. Looking at the whole video and sitting here for, for that meeting last week, it became apparent, obviously, there was a flip, but we are left wondering why, okay? Because there was, there was an obvious, an obvious flip with the developer, but there was also an obvious push from the planning and zoning department, from the director of the planning and zoning department and staff to allow access. And as you saw in the first video, you have the developer basically begging, that saying that they don't need access. And then, we have, within the meeting, the planning and zoning department saying, we are the ones requesting access. That doesn't make any sense to us. We wanna know why that would be happening from the director of the planning and zoning. Planning and zoning, the, the director and the developer, they're gonna be long gone, long gone. If this passes or doesn't pass, I wanna say that we've had five or six planning directors over the last seven or eight years. And so, the current planning director, who's advocating for the best interest of the future residents of the other development, they're gonna be gone. There's no guarantee that they're gonna be here. And all we're gonna have is future problems for the new property, for the new city manager to be dealing with, new city council manager, or, or new city council members to be dealing with, and planning and zoning. I'm gonna suggest, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna request to, to make a motion. I'm gonna ask you guys to make a motion to postpone until you've seen both videos in its entirety. And for you to ask questions of staff and the developer, why the flip? Everybody here wants to know. Almost everybody that's here tonight, we're here over the last two meetings, and we wanna know why the flip, and we wanna know why...
Mr. Estrada, your time is up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Andres Arroyo? Enrique Cisneros? Osvaldo Reza? Margarita Pérez? Ms. Pérez, you have three minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here to thank you for putting the door on the little library at Valle Hermoso. But there was just put like a plastic over it. You need to put a frame. You need to put a magnet. I had to throw away over twenty books yesterday because what happens is when they water the parks, with not having a frame around it, it just moves with the wind. So, I would appreciate, I mean, thanking you at the same time that if you can do the same thing that's at Champion Park. It would be wonderful if all the parks had little libraries. I don't know if you wanna go into that. We have an overabundance of books. So, I, I really would like for you to consider letting the, I know, I don't know who was the one that did the, the little door, but it needs a frame around it, and it needs a magnet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ignacio Salcedo?
Good evening. Ignacio Salcedo, resident of Rancho Miraval of the state for over twenty-two years. And I would like for you all to consider and look at the map that shows that Tres Caballos is actually a proposed cul-de-sac for the residents of Rancho Miraval and not a drive-through street. If you would please consider that. It is a proposed cul-de-sac under the original plan back in, I believe, nineteen eighty or nineteen eighty-one, eighty-two. It is on the map. It is a proposed cul-de-sac for the neighborhood, for the subdivision, and not a drive-through street. If you can please consider that before making your position on this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susana Reyes? Ms. Reyes, you have three minutes.
Good evening, city council and, and mayor. My name is Susana Reyes, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, Alex Reyes, on number twelve item. We are residents in the community, and we are opposed of the opening of Tres Caballos and Rancho Viejo for the through traffic. My husband and I have lived there for thirty-one years. We raised our three children there. And we chose to live there in that community. And as you can see, I'm very emotional. The environment provides for us the tranquility. It has minimal traffic. The neighbors are friendly. Thank you, neighbors. They, the number one reason for us to live there is for the safety of ourselves, of our family, and for the visitors that come and go. Our children grew up there. We walked on the streets. We rode our bikes. We walked the dog. We rode the horses. We jogged, we ran, so that they could be conditioning for their sports from school. So, through all those years, we had safety, and we didn't have any concerns. And as communities members in our community, they were respectable to the pedestrians on the roadway. Our traffic volume is minimum. As others in the community have stated before in other meetings, and I've been there, here, the coming and going is pretty much just ourselves, those that live in the community and our friends and families. We hear many that come and visit us at our environment. Our, our community is very quiet. They enjoy it. They, they wish they could live here. You know, is anyone moving out? Can we, is there any property for sale? Which will change if they do open that up. I want to state some facts for all to hear and to consider for the request of not opening that roadway. It is my understanding that from the last meeting, I learned that the width of Tres Caballos, sorry for the pronunciation, is not compliant with what it needs to be to safely accommodate the increased traffic. The road currently is twenty-seven, twenty-seven feet, and it needs to be thirty-five, four. And secondly, if the street is open, of course, more traffic will happen, and more traffic equals the likelihood of more volume. And the likelihood of opportunities of traffic violations increase likely would create a greater chance of accidents. So, it's just common sense. Thirdly, if opened, the higher volume of traffic would likely take the emergency vehicles that would be wanting to come through, or could come through, it would take them longer to get there through the street.
Ms. Reyes, you're tying this up.
Can I finish? Can I ask for a few paragraphs of finishing?
Do we have a motion?
All right. Make a motion to allow her to finish. Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro García?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz? And Ivan Colomía Lobos?
Abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, if it's open, imagine an emergency vehicle going through with all the other traffic. It is going to be, take longer probably to maneuver around that excess traffic. Of course, people move over. We all move over. But if we're just gonna keep it with the residents that live there, for sure, there is fewer traffic. So, over the thirty-one years I've been there, there's been only a few times that I've seen an emergency vehicle come, and they have the quick right-of-way passage. There's no high volume that keeps them from helping others in the safety. Now, on the other hand, as everybody's been revisiting the other meetings, of course, we were shocked, or I was shocked, that there was a change. All of a sudden, a big change, and because of the recommendation of staff. So, yeah, I want to know who that member might be or members, and why they're considering that. So, the emergency gate, I feel, is a great idea. It would allow the emergency units to respond in a timely manner, and the communities on both sides would get the benefit of that. It would keep our community safe, as it is now, and the livelihood would remain similar to what we have always known. My concern is safety, and I wanna say that in our safe community, we have many residents who has the professions that are in law enforcement and they, and emergency services. We have nurses. We have police officers that reside on that street, and they know about safety. They're not ignorant to it. I have a husband that's been on the force for thirty-eight years, going on thirty-nine for the city of El Paso. He works all day long, works with all kinds of traffic hazards, all kinds of, everybody breaking the rule, deaths, pedestrian deaths. He chose that area for his family to be, and so, it's quieter, peaceful. He can be away from the stress of the work where he helps the community here in El Paso. Now, if this is happening, he's coming home to the same madness that is out there in the world. He does not have that serenity. So, I ask that you consider to not open it. If we revisit what our mission statement is in Socorro, which I'm gonna bring up, and I know y'all can read, but I was rereading it today, and hopefully, I can reread it again. Your vision and our mission of the city of Socorro is to collaborate with our citizens in order to provide outstanding municipal service and utilize forward-thinking ideas to generate the highest possible quality of living. I don't think that's gonna happen if that's opened up. By combining honesty and integrity, continue to provide a safe and unique community. Our community is not gonna be safe, and it's not gonna be unique. It's like be every other community that has tons of traffic just pushing through. So, just please revisit what our mission is. Think about it as humans, as professionals, what you would want for your family and your friends if you lived in that area. And just, just keep our community safe the way we like it. And I think if everybody raises their hand from our community, do you guys agree with all the things I said? So, we have, you know, quite a few, except for, I know, not except for, those, of course, members that are not here. But I'm speaking on behalf of all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ferny Salsido? Mr. Salsido, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Noater. Madam mayor and council, I would just like to reiterate everything that all my neighborhood is saying. The number one is safety. I think we will lose that right off the bat. I have been fighting this for almost seven years now. We did it for forty-nine months. And to be honest with you all, it's not two hundred homes or two hundred and fifty homes that they... that you're talking about. It's five hundred and twenty lots. Do not be fooled by the numbers. It's five hundred and twenty. I have the paperwork here. I did take the opportunity to speak to Jose Salcedo, the chief for the fire department. And he said that he has spoken to staff and he has spoken to the developer. And he had only made a recommendation. He said that they are in compliance with the two Xs that they currently have. My question, as the other members of our community had asked, what happened if the developer was good with this? And it was denied in twenty nineteen for them to do this? And here they are back again with a new council trying to get their way. How many more times are they going to come to try and get their way? My question now, does staff work for the developer or does the staff work for the city? This came from Mr. Salcedo when I asked him and he said he was approached by him. That should not be happening, there's a conflict of interest right there. I think there's, there's means for you all to go into a special session and discuss. I have no need to lie. I had, I had never have. Ms. Rodarte, back in twenty sixteen, came in with a whole staff to my house. I opened my doors and we talked about transparency. And I have been that way, I have followed the rules, I have followed the law to the very best that I know how. And for things like this to be happening behind our back is not proper. Please take this into consideration and let's get all the facts out. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was our last speaker.
Thank you.
Moving on to presentations, item number five, presentation and update on the eighty-eighth state legislative session.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name is Rick Armendari, someone of the partners of former group of Marisa Márquez. Oh, she, well, she came up here. Also with me here, hopefully if there are any questions that you all, that I don't know, she'll be able to answer those questions. By way of a refresher, when the legislative interim was, we were in legislative interim last year, we put together a subcommittee, which was Rep. Garcia and Rep. Cruz. That legislative subcommittee looked at a variety of issues and put, we, with your help and Ms. Rodarte and her leadership, leadership team, put together a city of Socorro legislative agenda. So we're going to go over that agenda, we're going to talk about what happened during session, some of the major bills that were passed. We'll give you big chunks of information. We'll be glad to answer any questions individually, sit down with you, have a discussion over the phone, emails, whatever it is to be able to give you a lot more information. Keep in mind, some of these bills that we're going to be talking about are thirty, forty pages long, so there's a lot of detail. Third slide, please. To start, we're going to go over a couple of session statistics. There was over eleven thousand eight hundred and seven bills filed, or there were eleven thousand eight hundred and seven bills filed. Bills passed were three thousand six hundred and twenty-eight. That's a thirty percent passage rate. We put this statistic down for one important reason. This was one of the lowest passage rates in the last twenty-plus years that we've seen. We could only go back twenty years to see what that was. Typically, they're around fifty, fifty-five percent. What that means is legislation that was introduced this session had a much lower likelihood of failure than in past sessions. Next slide. Two important components of the eighty-eighth session, HB one and SB thirty. HB one is the budget. Was a three hundred and twenty-one billion dollar budget, which is for the next few years. Major points that were included in the budget were pay raises for government employees, not teachers, that's still stuck in limbo during the special session, funding for border security measures, mental health care programs and a variety of tax cuts. SB thirty, which is known as the supplemental appropriations bill, that bill is additional spending that is not included in the regular budget. And that supplemental had a variety of measures, including film industry incentives, water infrastructure grants, just there was over forty or fifty different types of, of policy or topics that were covered in this spending. So what were some of the major items passed? Well, HB twelve, expanded postpartum Medicaid coverage for one year. That's important because the state of Texas has traditionally fought any sort of Medicaid expansion and this was considered Medicaid expansion. So this getting through was kind of a watershed moment for the state. HB six, allowing murder charges for fentanyl poisoning. As we all know, fentanyl has been increasing in use, increasing in mortality rates. So the law was changed to allow these murder charges to be brought for fentanyl poisoning. HB fifteen hundred, strengthening the power grid. That was done really more through administrative oversight of increasing transparency and oversight within the actual board. SB twelve, regulating certain sexually explicit shows. SB fourteen, banning transgender Texas under eighteen from gender-affirming hormone therapy. That was more the, a Republican-led effort to look at how were they limiting certain acts or certain, certain areas within public buildings and also with individuals under eighteen. HB seven eighteen, probably impact us all, is deleting the use of paper plates on vehicles. There will no longer be these paper plates that you see on all these vehicles. Dealers will have metal plates, which they will give to their customers and do away with a lot of the fraud and what the state said was a lot of crime associated with the paper plates. So those are some of the major items that passed. Again, not all, just trying to get major chunks that were related to your agenda. What were the major items that did not pass? These are three big items. SB three, property tax release, relief. There's differences in the House and the Senate and a compromise could not be met on how, how are we going to give property tax relief? Or how is the state going to give property tax relief to its citizens? The two, the two choices there are either lower the appraisal caps or increase the tax exemption amounts. So neither the House or Senate could really agree to that. That was not passed. HB one hundred, allotments, allotments for schools. There are a variety of different types of pockets of funding that there was no agreement reached on whether to increase or create new pockets. That was not passed, still in limbo. And then SB eight can be termed as ESA, Education Savings Account or School Vouchers. That is very, very controversial, has been at the forefront at the legislature for many, many sessions. This session, there was a concerted effort by leadership, i.e. the governor and lieutenant governor, to really push this agenda. It was not passed. These three items, well, especially SB three and SB eight are really the two main reasons why we are currently in a special session, which is also in deadlock. So let us go into a variety of bills that were passed that directly impact the city of Socorro. Probably the most important bill that was passed that impacts not only your city but cities all across the state is HB twenty-one twenty-seven. What this does in a nutshell is it basically strips Texas cities of their authorities, of the authority to establish local ordinances related to A to Z, related to a variety of topics. And instead, you insert the state regs or state code in there. So for example, if a city has a curfew for juveniles at nine PM and the state says ten PM, well, the city curfew is now ten PM. There's a lot of question marks surrounding this bill. There's a lot of concern from cities. So this is going to be an ongoing issue as far as how deep and how far does this apply? But make no question about it, HB twenty-one twenty-seven is probably the bill that's going to impact all cities across Texas the most. These other bills, HB fourteen, twenty-three oh eight, they, seventeen fifty, they deal with the ability for city, for cities to regulate ag operations within city limits. So what really in essence these do is they increase legal protections for ag operations within city limits and decrease the abilities of cities to enact those types of regulations or exemptions. HB eighteen nineteen, again, talking about juvenile curfews, twenty-one twenty-seven really takes care of that. There's no need for that bill since twenty-one twenty-seven passed. The last one I added on here was a local, it's a statewide impact, but a local bill, limiting the adoption of a climate policy in a municipal charter. That bill was passed in direct relation to the Prop K election that was happening in El Paso. So now what this bill says is that any, any city wants to enact any sort of charter initiative related to climate change, it has to go through the appropriate state agency. But again, twenty-one twenty-seven kind of circles all that together. So you can see the far range and impact of twenty-one twenty-seven. Grant-related bills passed, ton of bills that were passed related to funding availability for cities. Really, probably the three most important bills for the city of Socorro are HB forty fifty-one. This allows now all cities to be considered a media production zone. So you have that ability to have film industry studios, there's a lot of grant money out there that you all can tap into with this, with the passage of this bill. HR one twenty-five, HB nine, there's a constitutional amendment related to that, but it's basically expanding broadband capabilities. That is also going to bring a significant amount of money to connect as many areas of the state, a lot rural that do not have internet. The question now is, is it satellite or is it fiber? That's kind of going to be the ongoing debate moving forward. And then SB twenty-eight, which is also a constitutional amendment, is comprehensive funding for water infrastructure. Again, a variety of grants, and one of our efforts was folded into this, a variety of grants for rural, for cities along the border, specifically for water infrastructure, including funding, including clean water. City planning passed, couple of bills there. One, cities are now able to convey city property, property owned by municipality, within a economic development or economic incentive agreement. That's new. That's something also very significant, the state had fought that for quite a while. HB nineteen twenty-two is reauthorizing municipal building permit fees. What this does is it sets a time limit, ten years for any permit fees. After those ten years, the city once again has to have a public hearing to reauthorize those fees, otherwise those fees go completely away. And the last, municipal annexation of certain rights away. Makes it easier with private property owners' consent to annex certain rights away for easements, for roads, for utilities, that type of thing. Again, I'll stress that is with private property owners' consent. Education bills passed, not necessarily city-related, but the school districts play a large role in all communities, so these bills are relevant. SB fifteen, SB seventeen, and HB nine hundred, again, all part of that social justice, justice agenda or social impact agenda, restricting trans athletes in college sports, banning diversity offices in colleges. Currently, a lot of universities have these diversity, inclusion and equity offices, those are gone. And regulating sexually-related materials in schools. What that does is that gives options to local school boards to, along with the TEA, deem certain materials offensive or sexual in nature. HB three, basically what that does is requires one armed guard at every school in any school district in the state of Texas. Again, something new. Miscellaneous bills passed, kind of, they don't fall into any category. Social, certain social media applications and services on devices. TikTok banned from any owned or leased device, any devices owned or leased by any city, county, state, et cetera. That is gone. And then forty eighty-two, clarifies projects on which cities or counties can issue COs. It just further defines the list of what is eligible for a city to issue certificates of obligation. What were some of the bills that were defeated? Modifying the planning shot clock, that would have decreased the time that cities had to come back to developers regarding planning. Allowing HUD code homes and residential zones under certain circumstances. Notification of a medical waste facility, that was a local bill by a local legislator that would have required notification to city, county, school board members with any medical waste facility coming in their area. That was defeated. Allowing to reauthorize street sales tax. And really, the last one, SB seven sixty-seven, that would have required this, all cities to publish and email out anytime there was a change in fees, anytime there was a change in permit fees, anytime there was any sort of change that had a fee associated with it. So that was going to be very cumbersome and that was defeated. City of Socorro efforts. So really, it's helpful if you think of this in three main areas. The first was a piece of legislation that we were looking to try to begin to address the issue of vacant parcels of land, right-of-ways through parcels of land where the owner is unknown or has recently changed ownership. That bill, that, that bill was drafted in the Senate, but unfortunately, the Senate sponsor wanted to study that bill a little bit longer, so there's going to be some interim work related to that. It's not as easy as it initially sounded, but there is more work to do on that. We had two appropriations riders that we were able to get in the House budget. One of them was removed, that was fifty million dollars for Rio Vista Museum Rehab. That was, again, passed in the House budget. When the House and Senate go to what they call a conference committee, it was removed from the Senate side. The other one was twenty million dollars for flood mitigation. That was, again, included in that bill we talked about earlier, it was folded in there. The idea with that is to keep at the agency to make sure the original intent of the rider, which was for small communities along the US-Mexico border for flood control mitigation, is still in that grant. That's the interim work that we're going to continue on, on those two areas. The last component of this wrap-up is special session. So a couple of hours after, after the special session ended, the governor called the first special session. And it dealt with two issues, school property tax and border security. And again, we're looking at how do we reduce the amount of taxes on homeowners, either through an appraisal cap or through an increase in the exemption amount. The second part is border security, which is seeking to increase penalties for certain types of criminal activities are along the US border, also in relation to smuggling persons and operating stash houses. The last slide here on the first called special session, kind of the points I went over. Bottom line here is the House passed exactly the same bill they passed in the regular session. The Senate has that bill. The Senate is not going to take any action on it. They're going to let this special session run out on June twentieth, where the governor will either call another special election on this or another topic or let this continue on for another month or so. Some of the discussion is the governor is waiting till September to hold this special session when people are back in school and it's, it's a different scenario as far as testimony. So that's the broad overview of the eighty-eighth legislative session. Like I said, we have information on all of these bills. If there's anything in particular that you'd like to know, we can reach out to myself or Marisa. We'll continue to work with your city manager and her leadership team to look at the impact of this legislation. Most of these bills take effect September first of this year. Some later, some in December, but most in September. So we have a month or so to really determine what the impact is going to be and how that impacts your city.
Ms. Pielos?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just because we're all here and I'm sure everybody would like to hear this. SB 3, so the current exemption that we have is 25,000. We recently went to, well, last year or the year before, we went to vote and it was passed to 40,000, the exemption. Is that what we're talking about here? So it was not passed or it was passed?
It was not passed.
Okay, so even though, I'm sorry, even though it was voted and passed here, it was denied at the Capitol?
Uh, the, well, I think there was a point of clarification at the end. They're currently, the Senate is currently in special session, so they have not signed any, they have the bill that the House passed, which is to raise the exemption to 100,000. That bill passed, it is sitting in the Senate, they don't agree with it, so June 20th, we'll, we'll find out whether or not they pass it, or if they don't, then nothing passes. So nothing is taking effect yet, because the Senate has not agreed to the House version of that particular property tax relief bill. But yes, you're talking about the exemption, it would go from 40 to 100, that's what's in the House.
Okay. That would be great. And then HB 586, I'm, I wasn't too clear on the right-of-way. Can you explain the city right-of-way? How does that affect the citizens and, and the city?
We can provide you more information. There are about four or five different requirements that the city has to meet in order for them to be able to execute a right-of-way. It would also have to be with the consent of the private property owner, but there's about four items in there and we can send those specifics to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, point of information, I have a question for legal counsel. Are there any parliamentary prohibitions to discuss potential legal issues that aren't listed on the agenda, under Robert's rules of order?
And it's unrelated to any agenda item?
Yes, it is related to one of the agenda items. It's related to agenda item number 12.
Okay. So we can, when that agenda item comes up, we can go to the executive session to discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
Item number six, presentation and update of the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022 by SBNG certified public accountants. Teo E. Cabrera, is that correct?
Yes, thank you. Hello, good afternoon, members of council. Thank you for having us here. My name is Teo Cabrera, I'm an auditor and partner at SBNG, our local CPA firm. I also have our audit supervisor, Abigail Tejas, and we're both the audit team for the annual financial statements audit for the city of Socorro. So I will just here give you a very brief audit, uh, update on the progress of the audit. Today was the last day of our audit field work and we are very pleased to present, uh, give you an update basically that the financial statement process is going very smooth as usual. We're anticipating that our audit report is going to be ready around June 26 or 27, and it has to be filed with the federal clearinghouse by June 30th. We don't anticipate any issues. We are going to have a comment about improving the accounting for grants, for the ARPA grants. There, there's some areas of improvement there in relation to the grant reporting that is required for that particular grant. However, we have not become aware of any fraud or any wrongdoing during the process of our audit. And basically, the purpose of the update is to request your permission to have the city manager approve the audit on your behalf, so it may be efficiently filed before June 30th, and further, it may be presented to you at the upcoming council meeting. And also to answer any questions that you might have about the ongoing process of the audit. Yep, so no questions though? Do we need a, a motion to allow the city manager to approve or no?
No.
Okay, sounds good. That's it, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Um, may we move item 14 and then item 12 up, please?
Second.
Ruben Reyes Esposito, Cesar Navarres.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Because item 12 is on here, I'm going to abstain, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to discuss with legal counsel.
We're actually posted for number 14 first.
Oh, we're not discussing 12 now?
Not yet. 14 first. 14 and 12.
And then talk.
Yeah, we're.
Item number 14, discussion and action to amend resolution 727. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, I'm Bobby Bowling. I asked the city manager to place item 14 on your agenda. If you recall, you should have the resolution before you, it's a, it's a restatement and a reaffirming of a resolution that you passed, I believe, back in January, resolution number 727, which we included in our tax credit application for the Navarres Palms Phase Two development. And you all unanimously passed that resolution, I appreciate that. But TDHCA asked for a clarifying resolution and some language. If you look down to the fourth whereas, well, the third whereas and the fourth whereas kind of clarify what's being restated in the resolved. They want acknowledgement of a census tract that was newly created and actually not even published until January 6th by HUD in a map. So it's a little, you know, disconcerting, we have this U.S. census that's supposed to do this census every 10 years, and the census that they did in 2020 didn't actually publish the maps until January of 2023. But what happened was there was a larger census tract that contained about 8,700 people and they broke it into two smaller census tracts. The one that contains Navarres Palms and the Jaime Lopez Memorial Apartments up the street is now in a very small census tract with only 761 households. And so they, they wanted some, a clarifying resolution that you're aware of that. And I, I can get into the, the details of census tracts and your community if you'd like. I really just, you know, the, the, the resolution is, is before you, it's, it's really just one page and I'm asking for passage. But again, I, I can, I can continue this presentation for 15, 20, 30 minutes if you'd like, but I think it's pretty much explained there in the verbiage, so. I want to respect your time, I know you have a busy agenda.
I have one question.
You have a question? Uh, Mr. Cruz?
So, Mr. Bowling, long story short, in order to remain in compliance with the original amendment and the, the housing tax credits that you applied for and we unanimously approved, there's new information that became available just recently and we all have to acknowledge that and, and amend this and, and that's all we're doing here tonight, correct?
That's exactly right, Representative Cruz. And to give you an update, the application looks fantastic. There's money to fund two applications this year for this region and we're either in first or second place. So as long as we clarify this technical kind of language issue, we should be able to come back and notify you late July that we've been awarded this tax credit development project. Again, it's, it's 96 units of apartments, it's a phase two of the existing apartments that are already out there. There's no additional streets or anything like that happening, it's, it's all served with what's existing there, so. Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Any other questions? Happy to entertain.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Navarres.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Thank you all very much, appreciate you.
Thank you. Item number 12, discussion and action to approve resolution 756 approving a preliminary plat Vista Bonita Estates, Unit 2, being a portion of Track 5, Block 24, San Luisario Grant, El Paso County, Texas.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session to discuss with legal counsel this agenda item.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Navarres.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
I will abstain. Mayor, can we have a bathroom break before we go into executive?
Quick, five minutes?
Five minutes.
Will you abstain? Do you need to be in executive?
So Mayor, we are going to recommend, because she's abstaining, that she's not in executive to discuss this.
Okay, does anybody else need a bathroom break?
May I ask a question to the attorney? Today when we spoke, was that part of, of what you recommended? Or you stated that I could sit up here as long as I did not vote, did not opinionate and did not make any recommendations? Or make any, uh, yes?
So I, I think if you're abstaining because of there's a conflict, you can't take a vote, move on the item, you can't vote on the item. And I would refrain from entering into executive session if you're abstaining from this particular item, out of an abundance of caution.
Is that a state rule or is that a state rule? Is that an ordinance, city ordinance?
No, ma'am, that's more of an ethics.
And, and that's written where?
In the ethics manual.
It's, so it's.
Because you have a conflict of interest.
Okay.
That exists and you're going to discuss legal issues regarding your conflict of interest.
Okay, and, and that's what I wanted clarification, because the constituents don't understand that. Okay, so I wanted clarification, that it's not coming from me, that it's, it, it, there actually is, I'm sorry, did you turn it down?
So legal counsel is just recommending, it isn't to counsel whether they allow you to be in executive or not?
I, um, I understand and I will excuse myself, okay?
Okay, does anybody else need a bathroom break? Apart from that?
Since I'm the only one and I'm going to excuse myself, so.
No, I'm asking, I mean, but, what if they need to go to?
Okay. Okay, did we, uh, did we vote?
Yes, we did.
I think there was a motion and a second, but was there a vote?
There's no vote.
There was, but it was, it was to move 12 into executive session.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody has to, yes, please, okay.
Okay.
I have a question. So... I'll do it.
Oh, yeah.
Unmuted.
It is 7:47 PM. We are now in regular session. Item number 12, discussion and action to approve Resolution 756 approving a preliminary plat, Vista Bonita Estates, Unit 2, being a portion of Track 5, Block 24, San Elizario Grant, El Paso County, Texas. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Loreen Quimido, City Planner. Item number 12 is the Vista Bonita Estates, Unit 2, preliminary plat. The applicant is requesting approval for this preliminary plat. The current zoning is, uh, does not exist. This property, this is in the Ciudad Socorro's two-mile ETJ, so it does not have any zoning. The size of the property is 101.81 acres in, it is currently vacant. The proposed land use is residential development for 283 lots. The request again is to approve Vista Bonita, Unit 2, preliminary plat. Planning and zoning staff recommends approval with the condition that an updated traffic impact analysis be provided prior to submitting the final plat. Planning and zoning commission voted for approval with that same condition at their June 6 meeting. This aerial image is of 2017. Vista, Vista Bonita Estates is highlighted in yellow toward the middle of the image. In 2022, the, um, development around the area has increased significantly, and you can see by the approved subdivision plats in the Ciudad Socorro highlighted in red. This is why staff was recommending that they update the traffic impact study. The one that we had was from 2017. The next slide, again, another aerial photograph showing Vista Bonita, Unit 2. The traffic impact study looked at the intersections of North Loop and Rancho Viejo, North Loop and Estate, and Alameda, and, um, trying to find. The updated traffic impact analysis will look at the same intersections. One of the issues that we had had prelim, initially with Vista Bonita, Unit 2, was that they did not include a park. This is a letter from the county indicating that they would take on the maintenance of the park. The next slide shows where the developer came back with the location of the park toward the northeast corner of the subdivision. This is an email we received today confirming the recommendation from Emergency Services District Number 1, Number 2 for the connection at Tres Caballos. And again, the location of the subdivision in relationship to the Ciudad Socorro's, um, city limits. Again, we do not have zoning in the ETJ zoning authority. These are property photographs looking at the top. Burbidge Road, connection to the, the subdivision. And then at the bottom, looking toward the Unit 2 from Tres Caballos, and on the right, looking at Trent Road. Uh, here is the preliminary plat, the connection to, um, Tres Caballos, to the north, and then to, the next slide will show the remainder of Unit 2 connecting to Unit 1, to the right of the image. With that, staff can answer any questions at this time, or defer to Legal who wanted to elaborate on a couple of other items.
If I may jump in, Mayor, as well, and add to the staff presentation. If we can pull up, please, if IT can pull up the city ordinances. And starting at 38-8.2. To explain the process to the members of the public, and then, as well as, again, to City Council, this item here is on a application for a preliminary plat to approve or to deny. And to go through the process, so you can understand, when it first comes actually to the planning zoning department, they have to meet a certain criteria under 38-8.2. They need to turn in an application, they need to pay a fee, and then they need to provide all the information that planning zoning is asking for, so the application is complete. And so if you go through 38-8.2, and we'll just kind of scroll down, it's a long, long laundry list of all the things they need to show. It goes through, um, issues with the site, ground elevation, storm drainage, and you can keep scrolling all the way through. It goes over rights away, street dimensions. It's a pretty exhaustive list, engineering reports. That's before it ever actually gets to Planning Zoning Commission. That's what is required to go to the Planning Zoning Department. Once it goes through the Planning Zoning Department, Section 38-8.3, the next section, the application is reviewed by the staff. The staff then recommends to the commission, Planning Zoning Commission, approve, approval, denial, approval with conditions, or recommendations. After that, it then goes through, uh, the Planning Zoning Commission. In this case, they had their meeting last Tuesday, and it went through the process, and it was, uh, approved. And so now it's here before City Council. The next section, if we can go down to, is Section 38-8.5. And that is City Council decision. So, once it goes through this process, and it ends up here with City Council, the standards that you need to follow, or, or what you consider on approval or denial, are actually listed in the statute. I mean, I'm sorry, in this ordinance. Section B covers approval or denial. You can recommend approval, approval with conditions, or deny the preliminary application within 30 days after it was approved by the commission. So, there's actually a timeline. From last Tuesday, there's 30 days for, for the City Council here to take an action. The laws were actually changed in 2019 by the Texas Legislature. And, you know, I guess, you know, I would say that is actually the Republican-controlled House and Senate that pushed through those changes. And it was statewide, and probably because developers have a pretty good lobby in Austin. But they changed it, and actually changed a lot of the discretion that City Councils had in the past, Planning Zoning Commissions had. So they changed it. And so, and they put this timeline. So, uh, even items that I, and I recall some members of public asking about, well, if we postpone it or table it, it still counts against the time limit. So if it's not acted on, and if it's moved today, and action is not taken, it's automatic approval without coming back to City Council. And so it, it needs to have a decision, otherwise it can be untimely, automatically approved. So that's something always for City Council to be careful with. If we go down a little bit further, so the Section 2, a little bit, if we can just scroll a little bit back up. So, it says that where the City Council conditionally approves or disapproves a preliminary plat, the City Council shall provide the subdivider a written statement of the conditions for the conditional approval, or reasons for disapproval. So, if it is denied, City Council actually has to give a written reason why they've denied it. And it has to articulate, it says, each specific condition for conditional approval, or reason for disapproval. And then it says, what are the reasons? It says, it must be directly related to the requirements in this chapter. It must include a citation to the law, including a statute or municipal ordinance that is the basis for conditional approval or disapproval, and your decision may not be arbitrary. So it has to fit something that's missing in the ordinances, and it doesn't comply, for you to then come up with a written reason on, if it's denied, this is why. Or if you put conditions on it, you have to point to the ordinance that says, well, this ordinance requires it, so we're going to make you do it. To give you an example, because this happens sometimes on, on, on other items where somebody's in the middle of a traffic impact analysis, or something like that, but they didn't turn it in yet, and so sometimes City Council or Planning Zoning will say, well, approve it, but you need to turn in the final traffic impact analysis. That would be like a conditional thing. And that's required as part of it. And hopefully I didn't lose anybody here, I know I'm talking a lot. So anyway, these are the standards that City Council must follow. If we can go down, further down to 38-8.6. Criteria for approval. So there's actually now a list of eight factors. Again, this came into place 2019. I was here actually with the Ciudad Socorro's Legal Council when we had to implement it very quickly. The legislature changed the law, Ciudad Socorro had to change its ordinances to comply, otherwise we wouldn't be in compliance with the law. The criteria it goes through, and this is the list, this is the only list that the city can consider, City Council can consider, if you're going to approve it, approve with conditions, or deny it. And I'll, I'll kind of paraphrase that, I'm not going to read every paragraph here, but, number one, preliminary plat is consistent with zoning requirements, or the approved development agreement, or is subject to any proposed zoning change. Two, it conforms to the approved master plan. Three, the proposed provision and configuration of roads, drainage, and other facilities conform to the city's adopted plans. Four, the configuration of roads, drainage park, open space facilities are adequate to serve the subdivision. Five, and this applies actually to this particular application, when the proposed development is located in whole or in part in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, and in the county, the preliminary plat meets any county of El Paso standards. Number seven, the plat is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. Excuse me. Number eight, preliminary plat is consistent with the park and open space plan. And so, the other issues that I've, that, that came up a little bit earlier, if we can scroll down to 38-59.1. 38-59.1, so it's several down, yeah, all the way down. Point 1. So on the questions of connectivity that came up, 38-59.1, and this is in regards to traffic impact analysis. A says, purpose and findings. New development must be served and supported by an adequate network of streets and thoroughfares. B, streets and thoroughfares are an essential, an essential component of the city's street network, and are necessary to accommodate the continuing growth and development of the city. The next, and now, I, I do want to show, if we can have IT show the other link, which is the state law ordinances. And I, I don't know if there's a way to zoom in on the screen to make it a little bit bigger, yeah. So the, the ordinances I just read from Ciudad Socorro, they were adopted from here. This was the Texas law change, and it's Chapter 212 of the Texas Local Government Code. If we scroll down just a little bit to 212.0091. There, there we go, yeah. So again, it has a similar language on approval or disapproval of plats. It says, A, municipal authority or governing body that, that conditionally approves or disapproves a plan or plat shall provide the applicant a written statement of the conditions for the conditional approval, or reasons for disapproval, that clearly articulates each specific condition for the conditional approval, or reason for disapproval. And then it goes on further, each condition follows the city ordinances again. A, be directly related to requirements in the chapter. B, include a citation to the law, including a statute or municipal ordinance that is the basis for the conditional approval, or disapproval, if applicable, and may not be arbitrary. And you can see, again, that's, section of law came about effective September 1, 2019. If we can scroll down further to Section 212.0099. Okay, right there. So, this section called Judicial Review of Disapproval. And it says, in a legal action challenging a disapproval of a plan or plat under this chapter, the municipality has the burden of proving by clear and convincing evidence that the disapproval meets the requirements of the subcha, of the subchapter, or any applicable case law. The court may not use a deferential standard. And a little bit of explanation of that is, clear and convincing evidence actually is one of the highest burdens, and this is on the city to show if there's ever a disapproval in, in a court of law, and it's challenged, what is the burden? Beyond a reasonable doubt is the highest one that you've heard on criminal cases. The lowest one on a civil case is more likely than not a reponent of the evidence, but clear and convincing is right at the top. So the city then has to show in writing what statutes are being violated if they, if they deny an application. So that's the standards that, that the city operates by. And then if we can just go down to one more section, 212.103. Oh, yeah, 103, so a lot further down, yeah. Because that's 0105, so, 212.103, all the way down. Yeah, it was right there, yes. So, 212-103. You know, hearing some of the issues that the public raised on traffic. So this is now state law, what it says on preliminary plats and traffic. And it says, traffic or traffic operations. A municipality may not deny, limit, and I think it says delay on that, delay or condition the use or development of land, any part of which is within an affected area because of, number one, traffic or traffic operations that would result from the proposed use or development of the land, or, number two, the effect that the proposed use or development of land would have on traffic or traffic operations. And slightly above that, 212.102, affected area actually includes, under A, 1A, in a municipality or a municipality's extraterritorial jurisdiction. So, affected area includes this particular application, and then the traffic statute applies. One last one slightly below it, 212.104. This also says, again, state statute. Provision not enforceable. A provision in a covenant or agreement relating to land in an affected area that would have the effect of denying, limiting, delaying, or conditioning the use or development of the land because of its effect on traffic or traffic operations, may not be enforced by a municipality. So those are the legal standards that apply here. If anybody on City Council has any questions, I'm happy to answer that.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes, I have a question. Can we see the letter from the fire marshal again? I didn't get to finish reading it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, I have a question for Legal. So, and, and again, this is a special application, this is not something that, that we see. Yes, there's replats that, that happen quite often, but because of its nature, the ETJ and, and the way it abuts the Socorro city line, what, what would be the, the necessary, then, motion to approve or disapprove, or, or therefore, the, the ability to offer, or afford the applicant the ability to, to have approval or denial from, from staff and this, this council?
So, the, the option for City Council, or, you know, to approve it, approve it with conditions, or deny it. But as I said in the ordinances and the state statutes is, if it's denied, or if conditions are put on there... or if conditions are put on there, you have to cite to what was missing, what the ordinances require, and that's why you're putting it, and you have to state it actually in writing. And so I'll tell you candidly, it's a very, again, high burden to meet because yet the laws changed in two thousand nineteen that were just more favorable. And it's all across Texas. Every city, every smaller city has dealt with this issue. And so it's something that comes up. And so for the applicant, the way their application came in is, I believe, they requested connectivity in the application. And I was present actually at the planning zoning commission meetings. First meet, there was one first meeting, they requested postponement, which they can. They don't necessarily have to ask for it. If the city agrees to it and they ask for it, they get more time. But otherwise, in the very first meeting, which I think was in May, early May, the thirty days time clock would have kicked in, and it could be automatically approved if no action is taken. And so then there was a second meeting last week on Tuesday, which I know the residents came and spoke at. And again, it went through it, and so it was approved by planning zoning commission on the way the application was turned in. And I know there was some discussion, and I think all the residents brought it up in meeting number one, about a gate or blocking off the access. But that meeting ended up being then tabled on, at least on that issue, or continued to last week's meeting. I think it was Tuesday, June sixth. So that's kind of, you know, I don't know if that answers the question.
You did, and I was going to ask if the applicants in the room today, if they can approach the podium?
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Robert Rometto. I'm with Trading Associates, and we agree with all staff recommendations.
Mr. Rometto, thank you for being here with us today.
Thank you, sir.
I know that it's quite controversial for the residents of our city. And we've researched, and we've gone back and forth, and we've debated, and we've questioned a lot of the things, but one thing that we cannot question, and one thing that we have all agreed on and we cannot go against is current city ordinance and Texas state law. I fought the law, and the law won, is a song, right? We all know. But I know in past presentations on behalf of your firm and your client, I know you stated that at one point maybe the gate would be a viable option. Is that off the table at this time? Or the connectivity would, you know, create issues?
Yes, sir, great question. That option is off the table tonight. Again, we're proposing to connect the full right of way with, as the plat was presented tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any other questions? Do we have speakers?
Yes.
But we don't have a final motion.
Do we have a?
Does a motion to, for discussion?
For discussion. With a second.
Do you want to amend the motion?
We have to, it's either approve, approve with conditions, or deny. Those are the motions we. No, I didn't say condition. It's either approve, approve with conditions, or deny.
At this time, you're asking for the council to take action?
Well, just to make a motion.
Yes, we need a motion.
In order for them to speak.
Allow to speak?
Yes.
I'll make a motion for one speaker because we've taken up quite a bit of time on this, actually years and months, but I'd like to make a motion to allow for one speaker at this time.
We need a motion because the motion that Mr. Garcia made was approved for discussion.
Right.
Okay, I understand.
So we need a motion for the item?
Can I see yours?
Sure.
Can, legal counsel, can I add to the current agenda item number twelve, some language to it, or does it, do we have to take it as is?
What's the language that you wanted to add?
Well, I think that it's fair to say that at a motion right now would be per state law requirements, and it's not stated on here.
Yeah, I think so. You can make a motion, however you make your motion, and then you can just say that it's pursuant to City of Socorro ordinances and Texas state law. But I think that's kind of assumed, because if you look at all the items, they're all brought about under resolutions and before us actually on state law. But yeah, you can add that, that's.
Okay, and in addition to protecting the rights and welfare of the residents, I think it's fair to say that it would be very, be incorrect if we weren't to take action on this today and open doors for legal liability. But at this time, item number twelve, I'd like to add the motion to approve as per the Socorro City ordinance and state of Texas law requirements for the approval of the preliminary plat.
Yeah, that's fine. I think that wording is fine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have several speakers for this item. Our first speaker is Ellen Pfeifer.
Okay, I'm Ellen Pfeifer, resident of Rancho Miraval Estates. And as I mentioned before and at the zoning meeting, we have a quiet and peaceful neighborhood and a safe neighborhood. And this would not occur if we had all five hundred plus the other development that's not even part of them running through the neighborhood, people from other cities, from other places off Alameda coming through and cutting through it because there aren't roads that cut through across that area. The subdivision there was set up and required to have ponding areas, and in the first development, a lot of the folks have filled in those ponding areas. So they're not following the rules that they're building by, and I cannot foresee that the second development is going to do the same thing. But it's likely because the yards are not that big, and if you put a big ponding area in there, you lose a part of your yard. But I think our major concern is the quality of our life in that neighborhood and the safety. It is a safe neighborhood right now, and if we have that running through there, it's not going to be safe. As I say, now we have a twenty-five mile speed limit, and that's not being enforced. And sometimes I don't feel so safe walking my dog. But I can't imagine with a lot more traffic, plus.
Ms. Pfeifer, your time is up.
You can't get off the street. Thank you.
Damian Pilaski.
Good evening again. My name is Damian Pilaski. The issue of drainage is one of the criteria that is, was addressed by the city's planning. And what happened was, or I don't know what happened, but what I did hear in one of the meetings was that the self-ponding was the only option, only engineering option. And you know, engineering, there's always other options. But self-ponding is not going to work. It's because the residents, whoever moves in there, has no incentive to maintain that. What happens is they get stuck in the mud of their ponds when they have seven or fourteen vehicles in their yard, as some of these residents in phase one do. They're getting stuck, so they fill it in so that they don't have that ponding. We have self-ponding in our neighborhood, and that works because we have irrigation. It's, we're incentivized to have that. So that works for us, yeah. So you're going to have a drainage problem down the road. You're going to have to tear that up. You're going to have to put in additional sewers and drains at great expense. I recommend, you know, that your city, because they say the advantage is they have a say in the development, well, then your planning zoning should have.
Mr. Pilaski, your time is up.
Should have said something.
Thank you. Raquel Gomez.
Thank you. So we just heard about why we can or why you can or cannot approve the plat based on the ordinances. But what do the ordinances say in regards to traffic, two-way traffic on a road that is not wide enough? We did indicate that Tres Caballos is not wide enough. There is irrigation on both sides. The traffic would be encroaching upon that. It would affect our irrigation. Also, Rancho Viejo itself is not wide enough. Again, no sidewalks. What do the ordinances say about the amount of traffic, two-way traffic on a road that is not wide enough with that volume of traffic that we would be facing? That's what I'm wondering. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Rett. Jesus Morales.
I would say that the council should take into consideration the offers that were already made by the developer himself. If you guys were to vote to approve, you could add the condition that he adds the gate. They had already made that recommendation before, so I don't see why you guys cannot put that condition as something that they had already offered, and then they backtrack and say no. I mean, the offer was already made. How come now they're adamant about not having that added? They made their offer. They opened that gate. They opened that door. So if you approve, approve with that condition. Because other than that, the community of the Miraval Estates is not going to benefit at all. The taxes are not coming into the city of Socorro. Nothing is, nobody's benefiting. The other benefit that we would get is that you put the gate on there for emergency purposes only. And that's what they want that road for, for emergency purposes, so that gate would be there for emergencies. So approve with that condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy McDaniel.
Kathy McDaniel, I've lived on Rancho Viejo for over thirty years. I'm really concerned about what it's going to do to my property value. This is an unregulated area. You should look at what's being built, being put on that property. It's not acceptable. In addition to that, I fear for my safety. I fear for the safety of the neighborhood with people that are moving in with substandard housing. I worry about the ponding areas with flooding. This really isn't a good idea.
Tony Valdez.
I have the same concerns as everybody else in this community. Initially, on that last meeting prior to this most recent meeting, it was pretty much agreed on that the developer would have access to that gate, put like, you know, have emergency access to that gate. But even Ferny, as I'll say though, he even asked if there was enough individuals at the table to make a decision, and he was told that there was. And then after that, apparently there wasn't enough individuals, and it was postponed, basically. So I say that safety is the number one issue here. The concerns for the road conditions is another issue. And I'm very concerned that this developer is saying one thing and is doing the other. So what is to say that when he starts developing these residences that he's not going to change anything else? Is there going to be a monitoring of this development? I'm all for development, don't get me wrong, but based on their track record, based on what they said before, I have no trust in this developer whatsoever, as what they're saying. And I hope that you understand where we're coming from, and I hope that you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Bianca Lascano.
Good evening. My name is Bianca Lascano. I live in the Los Adobes Street. And allow me to tell you, right now it's really peaceful, and I do feel safe. And like they mentioned about walking the dog and riding my bike, which I do myself sometime when I have the chance. And if you, if you open this street and let more traffic in, I think the safety is just going to no longer be there. And I think it's not only a safety for the people that live in the neighborhood, but also thinking about the drivers, people that would drive over there, like with the accidents that we hear in the news and all that stuff. And yeah, I mean, please do so, take into consideration and very carefully and make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Lascano.
Thank you for giving us all of this time. Bianca is my daughter. Right now, we have three of us living in Los Adobes, and it's only us three. So we try and walk for, at least four times out of the seven days. And right now, there's hardly any traffic. Whenever we do see a car, we just move aside, let the pass, let the car pass, you know, go back onto the street and keep on going with our own way. But I feel that if you guys do open up the street, it's just going to be the safety of everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Ofelia Carrrete.
Thank you very much for giving me and giving all of us the opportunity to talk again. I am a little bit confused about two things. One, the developer had already agreed that that street was not going to be open. And then he stated, and we all saw it, that it was required by planning. Why is it required by planning if the city of Socorro, it's not going to have any benefits? It's just going to have more problems, more burden. Our streets are going to be more destroyed, that it's going to be an extra expense on our city, on our taxpayer money, every single one of us. Why is it now that all these things has to be taken into consideration? All this law has to be taken into consideration when it was already approved that it was not going to be open? Why? That is my question, and that's one thing I don't understand. It is our city. We need to look for the benefits of our city. We not, we're all open for development. The city is going to grow. But let it grow in a sense that it's a benefit for the city.
Yes, Carrrete, your time is up. Hector Quiñones. Salvador Guiriego.
Hi, good evening. Just like my neighbors are saying, our main concern is the safety, is the safety. And I know that the developer had already agreed on this, on not opening it up. And I know that the developer had already agreed on this, on not opening it up. And the law changed back in 2019. Maybe it's something that the developer is doing, prolonging it, waiting for the law to change to benefit them. Regardless of what it is, it's no benefit to the city. Our neighbor is calm, peaceful. We are established. We are comfortable there. We just want the peace. We just want the peace. It's a lot of traffic that's going to go through there. I do walk these streets. I do walk Rancho Viejo, the canal, the irrigation ditch there. It's going to be a big burden. And the street of Rancho Viejo with all this traffic, more destruction on the street, taxpayer money from the city of Socorro paying for it, while this development is not even in the city of Socorro. It's in the county. So, if that comes up, that we need to restructure our streets, who's going to be paying for it? The developer is going to be long and gone and we're going to be stuck with all that burden. Please consider our safety and our wellness as taxpayers for the city of Socorro. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Garcia.
Hello again, Denise Garcia. I guess, aside from the traffic, number one is safety. My front neighbor, as you can see, we all know each other. We're all on first-name basis, which you don't see a lot in communities. You don't maybe not know your neighbor's first name, but we do. My first, my front-door neighbor, his son is special needs. You should see how happy he is when he's walking on the street with his mom. You should see, that's just him, that's what he enjoys doing. When we open up these streets, since they're not wide enough, who's going to provide the sidewalks? Who's going to provide those lights for his safety so he can continue doing that as well as all of us? We all walk our dogs. We ride our horses. Who's going to provide that? Another thing is regulations. There's no regulations on that neighborhood in front of or across from us, but there's regulations in Socorro. We are taxpayers of Socorro. So, how are we getting any benefit from this? What benefit are we getting from this? The biggest confusion is going back and forth. He's saying that, yes, we can provide an emergency gate and then now that's off the table. Why is that? Why is there so much back and forth? Why isn't there a solid answer to that? The main thing is the benefit. We're not getting any benefit out of this and we're residents of Socorro. We're taxpayers. But yet, this is going completely against us. Thank you.
Jesús Cabrera.
Jesús Cabrera. Like I said before, I live on the Tres Caballos Street. This time, I'm just concerned in the safety, but I just forgot something. When I bought the property 30 years ago, I got a plan. And actually, that street is supposed to be a cul-de-sac. And that developer, since we started all this mess in 2017 or 19, whatever, that developer knew that he don't have access. He started song number one or the first phase. He already has preparations to go straight to North Loop. What happened there? He can make the same thing, two more accesses, preparing, talk to the state and let them to go through the pecan farm, straight to North Loop. They don't have to touch Tres Caballos. And besides, in 2019, even before that this law came in, they put a barricade. That street will be closed. So, I don't know why we're coming back and forward and everybody has to come in to please, just help us to get through. Because there's too much traffic in that street and I handle that traffic. It's only one and a half inch of asphalt. Thank you.
Norma Estrada.
Norma Estrada, so I'm not going to play you the videos anymore. I think that you need to watch the whole video of May 15th to understand why we're so concerned. You answered the question as to why you cannot deny access through Tres Caballos, but you didn't answer the question as to why the city is so interested in granting up the access when they were so willing to cooperate with us and just have a gate. And they completely turned it around after recommendation from city staff. So, I mean, I just, we just, we want to understand that. Because this is going to affect us deeply, our safety, our families are not going to be the same. And there's just got to be another way. Please take that into account. Thank you.
David Estrada.
Hello. Okay, so we keep going round and round, but I'm amazed that there's not more pushback from you guys. Shame on you. I can't believe that the zoning board had more pushback and more open discussion than you guys. This is horrible. Ms. Kimero should be right here right now and you should be drilling her, drilling her as to why she steered this in the direction that she did. She's been here a couple of months. Five, the fifth or sixth directors in as many years. For whatever reason, she steered it. It's obvious. Look at the videos, the whole video for those two meetings. And then drill her, ask her, ask the developer. I'm going to tell you, if you think this community is going to go away and this passes, they're going to be here every meeting. They're going to blow up your phone. After Ms. Kimero is long gone, after the development is done, there are going to be a host of issues. And if you think this community is just going to back down, city managers, you guys, some of you will be replaced, okay? Future planning and zoning members and future city council, you're in for a host of troubles. I am ashamed that you guys have the power to at least ask the questions and you're not doing it. It's better...
Mr. Estrada, your time is up.
It's better for you to take no action, no action, and do not go on the record that you voted in favor of this. Take no action, abstain from voting, do not make the motion. Let this go through and we'll come to fight another day. But what you're doing right now by not bringing Ms. Kimero up here and drilling her, shame on you.
Andresa Rolles. Enrique Cisneros. Osvaldo Reza. Margarita Pérez. Laura García.
This is very disheartening, hearing all this, because we have no representation, no representation whatsoever for our homes, our dreams and what we have developed. And I will give him the rest of my time so he can continue to make the...
Thank you. Okay.
Ma'am, that's not the way it works.
Why not? He can use...
Council, I'm sorry ma'am, but a lot of time is your time. Council would have to suspend the rule.
Make a motion to give me her three minutes. Somebody speak in our favor and make a motion.
We have no representation. Our representative can't, for reasons being, and that's in that she doesn't do her job. But it's just very disheartening that we keep on coming back and forth with the same discussion. Nobody is worried about our safety. There's already development that's happening down our street and we're not keeping that in mind, that there's already a lot of traffic that's going to be added to our street. Just down Rancho Viejo, the Icon Homes that are being developed. Nobody has discussed that. We're a community that a lot of these gentlemen ride their horses every weekend down to go up to the mountains or up to the hills, the dirt, the desert. We have children still there, grandchildren. We walk, we run. We have the right to be heard and we're taxpayers. And there's another community that's coming in that has nothing to do with the city, yet they have more of a pull.
Ms. García, your time is up. Lupe Salcido.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Guadalupe Salcido and I live in Rancho Miraval Estates. I was born and raised here in Socorro. I would like to read this to you on behalf of, if you turn the pages, the rest of them are signatures from the people that you see here already. Okay? "We, the residents of Rancho Miraval Estates, do not want Tres Caballos and Rancho Viejo Streets to be open for through traffic for the proposal, proposed Vista Bonita Development. We are a community of 42 residential homes with a deadened street. This is not a main street to accommodate such a large volume of traffic, 500 lots from Vista Bonita Development. We, the residents of Rancho Miraval Estates, chose to live in this community for a reason. We do not want to lose the tranquility, the peacefulness, and much less the safety of our lifestyle. Jogging, running, walking our dogs, horseback riding, and simply enjoying the safety of our community due to a large volume of traffic coming through."
Ms. Salcido, your time is up.
Please think about it, council, before you make your decision. For the taxpayers and voters, give us that emergency gate.
Daniel Martinez.
Hello, Daniel Martinez. There's, I know there's an easement between our Miraval and the, what is it? The pecan branch. Why are, they're not using that? Number one, it's a cul-de-sac. We just saw the map. I don't know if you guys have access to the map. But that Tres Caballos, it's a cul-de-sac. How are they going to destroy that? What was your one I was thinking right now? But, I mean, it's something that you guys can't think about the easement. I think that they're made for that. So, I don't know if you guys have access to the map so you guys can see it. We have pictures of that map where it's a cul-de-sac. Thanks.
Susana Reyes.
Hello, I've lived on this street for 31 years. The main thing, main concern is the safety. I'm for the emergency gate. What we have in our neighborhood is commitment. We're dedicated to the safety of our neighbors. We obviously love our area. Most of us have been there for over 20 years. How many have been over, well, that are still here? So, we don't plan to move. We plan to retire there. I already stayed in. My husband is an officer. I was an educator. We have many people in our community that are very wise. They have looked after the safety for so many years in their professions. They're not stupid. They're not ignorant. We know what we're talking about. I'm pretty sure you might be feeling pretty uncomfortable because the meetings before, you commended us for speaking out and sticking together and that somehow you spoke something, I don't have the correct verbiage or the quotes, but if you can look back in the previous meetings, you said in your neighborhood, you can't even get four people to, something about parking. So, that was very kind of you. It was very kind, but I don't trust him. He's, he changed. He flipped. He was going to open up, or not open up, but have us, have the ability to have the emergency gate so that emergency people can get through. I mean, that's all we want, for people to be safe. It makes sense. It's common sense. Thank you for your time.
Ferny Salcido.
I'm not at a loss for words, believe me, but I am very frustrated. We have been working with this development since 2016. Now, in 2016, June of 6th, they were denied, okay, this development. We were, this process is grandfathered prior to 2019 because we go back to 2016. I think that we can use that leg to stand on. The law has changed, yes, but we are grandfathered with this development as being presented. Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. It's very frustrating. Now, I'll move on and I'll come back to that issue. If we do open this up, is the city going to change all their ordinances throughout the city of Socorro to accommodate this developer to use our streets? Because now we're going to need major arteries. The street arteries will have to be a minimum of 40 feet, which I know they're not. Tres Caballos is only 27 feet. Are you going to go into intimate domain? Are you ready to do that and disrupt our whole city to allow this developer access to our street?
Mr. Salcido, your time is up.
I think that we can work together on this. Before the decision is being made tonight, I think that we need to put those provisions, the gate, and that we are grandfathered with this pursuing developer.
Mayor, those are all our speakers. Do we have questions? Mr. García.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments. Our city staff's here to execute policy and state law, not to attack you, not to tell you you can't. And that's who we work with and that's who we need to work together with. Our staff was attacked and I don't appreciate it. Because our staff is not here to make your lives whatever you think they may become. We're not here for that. Our staff's here to work. This is not the same Socorro it was. So, you know, I would appreciate if our staff wasn't attacked and alleged things that they're doing. Because we could work together if we talked to each other. But when our staff is attacked, I feel attacked. And we were attacked and we should be, and we were told to be ashamed of ourselves. And that's fine. You can, we can take it. That's fine. That's who we are. Our staff has a job and our staff's going to do the job. And it's our decisions that we make. So, if you guys have to attack us, that's fine. Because that's who that job comes with. I would like to ask our legal. If we don't approve this, what happens?
So, if it's not approved, and again, you have to then state the reasons why it's not being approved, the developer actually then has a chance to even still come back and to get into compliance. If there, let's say there was an item missing, well, they can resubmit it.
Is there an item missing?
Not that I can see on the legal side, no. And from what came through the Planning and Zoning Commission process and through the Planning and Zoning Department, you know, the recommendation that have come from Planning and Zone Department is that it's met all the criteria. Couple of things, and I want to correct this and this might answer some of the questions of the public on the process. So, this is a preliminary plat. There's still a final plat that would come back here to city council and actually would go back to planning and zoning. So, there was planning and zoning one time, city council, this is the second time. Third time will come back to a final plat. Third time will come back to a final plat at Planning, Zoning again, and then it will be back here in front of City Council again. So, there's another chance again for the public to voice concerns. There was a question on, is there a monitor, and I forgot, I'm sorry, who asked that question about a monitoring progress on, are they in compliance with statutes and ordinances? So, that final plat, they then have to show that, again, that they met certain criteria. And I think the maximum time limit for a final plat is usually two years? It could be up to a maximum of two years. Sometimes, applications come in, preliminary plat and final plat together, but this is not that. This is just the preliminary plat. So, it will come back again to Planning, Zoning. And the last comment I want to ask or make that a few people had brought up was the benefits to the city of Socorro or, or the disadvantages to the, you know, to the residents. This isn't the ETJ territory, this particular property. It's kind of a weird concept because they, for a lot of other reasons, they don't have to come to the city of Socorro for approval of anything. But under the law on it, if it's in ETJ, they have to come for a preliminary plat. They have to come to the city, even though they don't necessarily get any benefits from the city. The reasoning behind this on the, on the, why, you know, why do they have to come here and get approval is if the city were to consider in the future annexing that property and then, or that, that land and making it subject to the city of Socorro's rules and ordinances, then they would start being in compliance already because they had their plans in conformity with the city. So, that's, that's kind of the process. I will tell the City Council as well that, and maybe you, you all have gone through this before the last couple of years, the annexation rules also changed by the Texas Legislature. They made it now harder also to annex other territories. It used to be easier for a city. I think now requires, it requires a vote by the neighborhood, neighborhoods that would be annexed. They made it more difficult because a lot of cities wanted to annex properties. Again, Republicans in the Texas House and Senate made it more difficult so city couldn't just go claim all the properties around it. So, that's just some of the issues I may address, some questions.
And one more. Is this plat grandfathered in from 2016?
No. So, this is a brand-new preliminary plat, so this is starting off new again.
Just wanted to make sure of that. Thank you. Mayor, may I?
Yes, Mr. Cruz?
So, I'm gonna put my diplomacy aside for a bit on this agenda item. You guys, I applaud the neighborhood, I applaud the residents. You guys put together a, a very good presentation. We've all witnessed that. We've all witnessed statements that today are now untrue. Again, I, I would also share the same feelings you do. I don't, I don't confide or trust much in, in the current development firm right now after statements being said and passed and, and now today and in planning and zoning meetings. I, I don't agree with that. I, I don't. You guys are told one thing and now you're being told another. I get it. I understand that. Which is why we discussed with attorneys because there was a statement made by one of the residents, meaning that it's our, our job and our duty and obligation to protect the welfare of the residents, as well as your all's tax dollars. The last thing I want to see is tax dollars being spent on, on attorney fees. But at the end of the day, to make me go home and, and sleep at night, I'd like to, like to rescind my, my motion right now on the table and, and I'll abstain from this one right here and, and we'll see how it plays out. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, please understand that there are laws, there's policies and ordinances that we cannot, and we cannot supersede as a municipality, although we, we, we want to. The last thing that we want is for y'all to feel uncomfortable in the neighborhoods that you live in. But at the same time, just beware that the decision we make up here is, can also be detrimental to the decisions that are being made at the level of planning and zoning. So, that, that's my motion now on the table, mayor and council.
Anybody else would like to make a motion?
I will abstain.
Anyone else? Ms. Guadalupe?
Yes, so we have District Four abstaining, District Three, and District One. That leaves two members, so we don't have, right, the votes, right? So, if the motion dies and we don't have a motion on the table either to deny or to approve, it's automatically gonna get approved.
Mayor, may I?
Mr. Cruz?
But at least it's with the effort of this body right here that understands the concerns of the committee saying that this, this body did not approve or disapprove, and so we're gonna let it ride out as per Texas state law or ordinances, but I don't feel that we feel comfortable approving this item tonight.
Ms. Villalobos?
May I ask a question? Am I allowed to?
Yeah, what's the question?
So, there's three members. I'm sorry. There's three members abstaining. Isn't that more than the five voting?
Right. So, the, the net effect is if no action is taken, so if there's not enough votes, it automatically passes actually within thirty days of Planning, Zoning's recommendation, which was Tuesday, June sixth. So, it'll be thirty, thirty days from Tuesday, June sixth, it automatically applies if we don't have enough votes.
Thank you for the clarification.
I'm sorry. And I said it automatically applies, automatically gets approved.
So, we don't have a motion?
Or moving on? Can we suspend the rules for Mr. Salcido?
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Villalobos?
I'm abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you. Like I said, I've been here several years now. This was submitted, Phase One, Two, Three, and Four. We are grandfathered into this. You cannot say that we were not grandfathered into this. Because we are. This development is a hundred and seventy acres. Out of the hundred and seventy acres, if you do the math for the parks, we should have a park, or they should have a park, of five point two acres. And that park should not be on one side of the road. It should be divided because they're not, it states on there that you cannot, that you don't walk from one end to the other end, which is gonna be like half a mile or better to get to a park. Another thing, the park is being proposed, is being on the easement that is proposed for the master plan for the roadway to the new bridge. Say they do come up with a five-acre park at that location where they proposed it right now, and then they come, the, the text dot comes in and takes that park away because they want access to the new bridge that they're gonna build on Pan American Highway. That park has been reduced to less than two acres. For a development of a hundred and seventy acres, a development of five hundred and twenty residents? They're not being, they're being dishonest with us. They're not putting everything on the table. I have to dig and dig and think about this and think about that. Let me tell you, this has been very hard on me this past week, on my wife, on the rest of our residents. We have been up through the night just thinking, thinking, but all said and done, I believe that we fall under the grandfather when the development initiated before the 2019 law change. Consider that. Thank you.
I'm gonna abstain as well. That's it? Good.
May, may I?
Ms. Villalobos?
Ms., Marwan? Question, I, I don't know if I can ask this question. I'm so afraid to ask it. Is he right? Is it grandfathered in? Can I ask that, that question first?
Yeah, so I think this again refers to the plat that was provided?
Yes.
The plat that now applies is actually the one that's on the table, the preliminary plat.
It's a continuation, sir. They went through Phase One and Two, and now they're going on to the second phase. They reworded Phase One, Two, and Three, and Four to Unit One and Unit Two now. This is the wording that was redone.
Okay, so you're saying that a preliminary plat was already approved?
The preliminary is approved with denial to access to Rancho Viejo. The city wouldn't put a barricade. It was approved on January, I mean, June the sixth of 2019. I have the minutes, I have to go through them.
Yeah, I'm not sure this applies because the ones I'm actually looking at here also don't have any recording information on the plats. These are draft.
If you allow me a minute, I'll, I'll dig right here. But yes, sir, the city should have copies of all of this. These are my personal copies. We had meetings, we, we, Mr. Guadalupe gave you the opportunity to visit with the developer, where they disclosed at one of the meetings that there was a conflict of interest and he dismissed himself. I forget the gentleman's name, the lawyer, all that?
Verkleb.
See, so I've been here the entire time. This is grandfathered, this is a continuation of this. It's not a new development. It's a hundred and seventy acres. They're coming out and saying, they're, they're, they're being deceptive with us.
Yeah, I mean, the, the way I see it, and I could only go off the application that is submitted, you know, it's a preliminary plat in front of the City Council, but I'll be happy to look at other stuff that's provided.
It's very volatile. It's not our fault, the law changed. It's not your fault, the law changed. I know you're here to interpret the law for, for us, because it's really hard under, if you, I don't know if I can take this time or not, under Texas general law, two one two point one zero three, you articulated really good, but you skipped the C, subs. Gosh, I don't have to look. I'm getting old and I apologize for this. But yes, it's, it's on there, that the municipality passed the right to deny.
Okay, Mr. Salcido, unfortunately, you know, it, it is taking a while and we need to get to further items. I don't know if more people are here for other items. I apologize, but we do need to move, move on. I'm so sorry.
I understand. Thank you so much, but yeah, let's, before we jump into something, let's go back and, and look at all this. I might be wrong. I'm not saying I'm, I'm shit, right? But I believe that we are grandfathered, due exception to the law that will change in 2019. Thank you so much. I really do appreciate.
Mr. Baty, do we, so you said, you're saying, okay, so it's approved in thirty days, correct?
That's right.
Or it's approved tonight?
So, if, you know, what the record will reflect then is that if we didn't have enough votes or no motions were, were, were taken, that there was no action taken on this item. So, then automatically, without City Council doing anything, it's going to be approved retroactive thirty days to Tuesday, June sixth.
That's just a preliminary.
Right. It's just a preliminary. So, you'll still have an option, okay, to speak and you can come back. And in that meantime, you can, I guess you can, you know, talk to our staff and show them the, and see if it is grandfathered or not.
Yeah, and one of the difficult things too, because as representing the city, is that I can't provide legal advice to you all as individuals.
I'm asking for it.
Right. Yeah. The best thing to do is to get, get legal representation if you have questions like that, but really I can only provide advice to the city of Socorro or, or, you know, point to the ordinances that, that apply.
May I? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, I think if there's no further motions on this, then the, we can reflect that no action was taken and then you can call the, the next item.
I'm sorry?
Consent.
Yes. Moving on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Villalobos?
Yes.
Let's just wait till they, they leave. Those should go by quick. And then we'll go into a second. We're ready? Moving on to regular agenda, planning and zoning. Item number nine, discussion and action to approve Resolution 753, approving a final plat, Sandero Flores Village subdivision, being all of tracks four B and four C, Block twenty-seven, Socorro Grant, City of Socorro, Texas. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. This is the request by the applicant for Sandero Flores Village subdivision final plat. The zoning for this property is R1, single-family residential. It is four acres in size. It is on Sylvia Court. The property is currently vacant and the proposed land use is single-family residential. Again, the request is for approval of the final plat. Previous council action included the approval of the preliminary plat at your July first, 2021 meeting. Planning and zoning recommended approval. The planning and zoning commissioners voted for approval at their meeting on June sixth. The next slide shows the location of the property. And it connects to Socorro Road to the east, to the west. This is the zoning map showing that the property is R1 residential. It is R1 residential to the north and south, east, and there is an R2 just to the south and agricultural as well. These are photos looking at the property from Sylvia Court. The bottom view is the ponding area that is also included in this plat. Here is an aerial photograph. And the next slide shows the preliminary plat that was approved. This plat included dedication of additional right-of-way for Sylvia Court and the ponding area. And the next slide is the final plat. Staff can answer any questions at this time.
Any questions?
Ms. Reyes? The picture that they have right there, they, they already started working on, on the ponding area or what's?
No, the ponding area was there. I don't know if that was, you go back to the aerial? Oh.
There's like a...
If you look at the aerial photograph?
This one?
Yes. So, they've already gone in with some of the improvements. They've already gone in with some of the subdivision improvements. They're not complete. They've paved the... They've paved the, added the additional right-of-way to Sylvia Court, they're working on the ponding area. They've already installed the, the poles. They still need to install the lights.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz is absent, and Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Item number 10, discussion and action to approve resolution 754 approving a final plat, Socorro Logistics Center, unit number three, being a portion of track 13A, block five, Socorro Grant, Socorro, Texas.
Motion to approve? Second.
Thank you. This request is for the approval of Socorro Logistics, unit three, final plat. Presented for your consideration tonight, the zoning for this property is ICMUD industrial commercial mixed use. It is 6.5 acres in size and located at North Loop and Logistics Center Court. It is currently vacant, and the proposed land use is industrial development. City council approved the preliminary plat at their July 5th, 2023 meeting. Staff is recommending approval of the final plat. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval at their June 6th, 2023 meeting. The location map shows the property up against the Socorro city limits. It is just north of, uh, North Loop and Nuevo Weko. This development is ICMUD, as I mentioned, and part of a larger development that extends into El Paso, the city of El Paso. These are photographs of the property, looking at, onto the property from North Loop Drive. The next slide is the aerial. You can see that the area around it is agricultural, and the development that's already, at the time of this aerial begun, for the Socorro Logistics development. The next slide is a preliminary plat that was approved by council, and then the final plat, which is being recommended for approval by the planning and zoning commission and, and city staff. With that, staff can answer any questions, and also Mr. Grajeda, representing CEA, the consultants, is also available to answer any questions you might have. I missed a slide, this is part of the larger master development, for, master planned development for Socorro Logistics, and this is where it sits in the larger map. North Loop is on the left side of the image, and Nuevo Weko is on the, the bottom part of the image.
Questions?
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Item number 11, discussion and action to approve a resolution 755 approving a preliminary and final plat for Vanguard subdivision, being tracks 1Y and 1Y1 Lake Clark survey, number 293 abstract 6257, City of Socorro, Texas.
Thank you for your consideration. This item is the request by the applicant for approval of Vanguard subdivision preliminary and final plat. The zoning for this property is M1, light industrial. The size is 18.37 acres. It is at the Gateway Boulevard East and Alyssa Road intersection. The property is currently vacant, and the proposed land use is light industrial. They are requesting approval for the preliminary and final plat. Planning and zoning staff recommends approval, and the planning and zoning commission voted for approval at their June 6th meeting. The next slide shows the location of the site, again, on the corner of Alyssa and Gateway East, about, just short of a mile north of Horizon, and Gateway East. The next slide shows the zoning map, the M1 zoning, C1, I'm sorry, C2 to the north and south, and then the freeway and gateway to the west. These are photos of the property, the top one is a look at the property from the corner of the Gateway East and Alyssa. The bottom photograph is showing the property as it looks from Stockyard and Alyssa. An aerial photograph shows the land uses around the area, this is a dated photo just to the north, west of the property, the, there's already an industrial-type warehouse being constructed there, and then, um, commercial uses to the, to the east, and then to the south, a mix of, of industrial, commercial uses. This is the preliminary plat, they proposed to convert two tracks into two large lots for the construction of, at least on one of the lots, a truck dealership and mechanic. The next plat shows the final, as being proposed. With that, staff can answer any questions you might have. The applicant's representative, Aaron Alvarado with Brock and Bustillos, is on, on the call as well.
Questions?
Motion? We need a motion.
A motion, we don't have a motion.
Motion to approve? Second.
Now that we have questions?
Four, three, three and a half.
No questions.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Item number 13, discussion and action to direct staff to pursue the development of a uniformed development code to replace existing zoning subdivision and development-related ordinances to encourage the development of strong, healthy communities.
Motion to approve? Second.
Thank you. As a quick overview for the presentation, I just wanted to highlight that, I'll try to quickly go through what our current planning initiatives and what maybe some of our current challenges are with the existing code. How these city codes impact development, and then some zoning practices, and why unified code might be a good choice for the city of Socorro to pursue as we consider rewriting our, our subdivision, our development ordinances. So there are a lot of things going on in the city, a lot of development. We have just kind of gone into and are about to complete the past more shared use path, which we hope to see more of throughout the city. The Rio Vista and Bovi Road bridge replacement, just one example of infrastructure needs that the city needs to tackle with limited resources. Our tier 01, looking to the future in the development of roads connecting the interstate to the east-west corridors, and then maybe in the future, the development of border highway east. A Sparks Arroyo, again, another example of infrastructure needs that the city has. How do we address those? Also sidewalks, we have a sidewalk master plan, doing, city is doing a great job of trying to implement those and pushing those, filling in those gaps. Historic preservation, another unique challenge that the city has. How can we, how can we preserve our historic jewels and resources and conserve those areas that are important to the residents of Socorro? I am about, we are about to begin the development of a comprehensive plan update, another important initiative that's going to help shape the future of Socorro. And one of the tools that we are going to use to implement these is our zoning and subdivision ordinances, and our ordinances as, as a whole. This new plan is gonna, this current plan projects our growth to 2030. What do we all envision as a community and with our residents, what that future beyond 2040 will look like? That was awarded to Matrix, and we're going to be kicking off that development very soon, here in the next month. Now, with, in terms of challenges of the existing code, there is a little disconnect with the comprehensive plan. Very limited zoning districts by some standards, and maybe some outdated practices. There are, might be some misalignment with state statutes. We just have this new legislature with new rules for us to kind of revisit. And sometimes we have been met with developers wanting to come to the city, and they have a lot of questions. We can eliminate a lot of those questions if we tackle the inconsistencies and the vague language that, that exist currently and have been expressed. And then maybe look at the length of review. Are we being proactive in, in development and helping everyone with their developments on this resident and the developing, development community? So, city codes that impact development, historical landmarks, chapter 20, manufactured mobile homes, chapter 26, subdivisions, zonings, chapters 38 and 46, Mission Trail historic guidelines. They're a bit separated, and we can go ahead and bring those together. Currently, our zoning code is more of a conventional, more Euclidean zoning, which really does restrict the types of uses in each individual district. Other forms of zoning guidelines exist such as forum-based code. It's developed as part of a newer urbanism approach to a smart growth and a return to walkable cities. And they tackle that with the zoning. Design guidelines and overlays on other parts of useful, to other tools that are useful in the zoning and development of the city, and can be tied together using a unified development code. So a unified development code could then serve as a single guiding document within our jurisdiction to, to include zoning, subdivision, all the infrastructure regulations and requirements, putting a little more teeth into the historic guidelines, butcher guidelines, and outside of the legal threshold of, of our ordinances. So looking forward, it would, it might seem like a long process to go ahead and try this uniformed development code process. It would be a review with city staff and whoever we reach out to through an RFQ process to partner up with, to, to, to evaluate our, our ordinances, and then meet with stakeholders, the public, residents, neighborhoods, real estate, everyone to, bring, bring everyone to the table to review those, offer ways we can improve the ordinance. And like everything else, public hearings, and to vet the, the changes, and see how well they align with what we want to do in the comprehensive plan. With that, staff can answer any questions.
I have a question.
Mr. Cruz?
So this is good, and it's long overdue, but my question for staff is, would the city need to enter into like a moratorium period of some sort in order for this to take place, to establish these changes? Or can we continue to conduct business as normal?
Yes, we can, can, can continue to conduct, conduct business as normal. And there is no need to pause development in the city as we review these ordinances.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Thank you.
City manager, item number 15, discussion and action to direct staff to research and amend chapter 46 zoning, article 5 supplemental section 46 dash 633.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council, actually, this is Mr. Reyes's item. Our city clerk, because I sent out the email, she placed it under my name. But I do know that Mr. Reyes was the one that brought it up, I can present it.
It's under your name, so I guess.
Okay.
Now, um...
I can present?
Real quick, um, we all know there's a lot of different needs, agriculture, residential. In this case, they're mixed. And I would like for, for staff to look into little details, storages, bigger vehicles, what else?
The storage containers, like the roll-up containers, if you see, more and more people are using those as, so just create an ordinance that will allow them, but then have guidance on how to be able to use them.
Right.
And I think that the storage containers you're talking is more geared toward agricultural land.
Right.
And that's because that's kind of where they've been using to store their hay or the tools that they use from their farm area.
I have a question on that. It also, on, on section D, it says parking of semi-tractors, trailers, or commercial trailers. On, on trailers, I mean, would somebody be more specific on that?
So that's our current ordinance? So what Mr. Reyes is requesting is for us to amend, right? And actually provide more details on what is allowed, where is it allowed? Just provide more information as opposed to the way it's written right now. I think he's looking for more clarification and being able to... And I also think he wanted to add like the accessory structures, right? Because right now in our current ordinance, you can't build anything bigger than what you currently have. Most of these farms, their dwellings are very small. So the accessory structure would have to be smaller than that, not enough room to store your hay or your supplies for your farming area. And I think that's, those are the challenges that he's trying to tackle, and that's where we're gonna go back and research.
So, where it says prohibited and all residential, right? Could we add something to that? I mean, I've had a couple of constituents call, and they're like, well, there's a whole bunch of trailers, and they send pictures, and I send them to you.
So this amendment would allow us to write in that language?
Oh, perfect, okay. I was curious about that.
So those are the things that we're gonna tackle. However, I can't act just on one, that's why it comes to council, is a board. You all give me directives, and okay, let's, let's go ahead and, and get this. And of course, if you want to add anything else that you want us to look at, we'll take your recommendations.
What would be the language there that we can use for those specific trailers?
So I need to get the actual legal name of that specific trailer, so we can add it to the language.
Oh, okay.
Or how do we encompass more trailers? There, there has to be some certain language that would cover that, right? But the way it's currently written, it does, it's very specific. It's very, well, it's very specific, so if you go out there and it's not a semi-tractor, well, we can't really enforce that.
Motion to approve? Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to go into executive?
Motion to go to executive? Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lobos.
Yes.